Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. We have an agenda in front of us. We need to add in one item unless anybody has more. So I've put this TID, SMR ID amalgamation at ten point ten. Does anybody else have anything they need to add, would like to add in?
I can accept the agenda with additions.
All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Okay. Protocol items, first, I'm just going to say thank you to the staff for organizing the grand opening events of the Boxall Safety Rest Area. Second, I'd just like to recognize Counselor Haug, who resigned on September eighteenth for four years of service in Division Seven. Anybody else have any protocol or announcements? We'll skip over four so we can go to our delegations first. Dwayne, if you want to come up and... You can take that off.
I just wanna...
That looks better on.
Okay, I'm just here to thank the council and like Jack Dunsmore, Brian Pierce, Corey Green for the drainage project on sixteen four. It's been a long goal. I do think it's completed now. I'm not in the loop, but I think it's done. I think Brian, you're the only one that's been here ever since we've had the goal here, and it's been a long goal. So I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved. It was a, it was a tough goal and thanks, you know? And then now that it's completed, I do have some questions about how it's gonna be operated. Like the gates are all open right now. I do, I think they should be closed and on Range Road sixteen four and intersection of five thirteen. It's gonna be split there. It's supposed to go fifty percent down the west side, fifty percent down the east side. How is that gonna be done? Is there gonna be like a handbook that we're gonna follow? I don't know. Like I don't want somebody to come in here in ten years from now and say, hey, that's not how it's supposed to be. You know, maybe I'm not gonna be here, like I might not even be here next year, so you know? We gotta make sure it's gonna be run, right? And I don't know how you guys are gonna move ahead with it.
Arlos, does somebody from staff want to address this one?
Yeah, real quick from, from a mention of a handbook, that was part of the, part of the project was development of a handbook and guide to actually operate the drainage system. We do have Corey Green on the, on the meeting digitally, so he'd be able to speak to it in more detail. So I'll let him speak to that. He should be chiming in right away. And if he's not, then it would be...
Well, we don't, I don't need an answer today. I just wanna know, like make sure it's in writing that it's gonna be...
For sure, yeah.
Like I don't want somebody to come in and say, hey, this isn't, not how it's supposed to be and...
I know that that was part of the project was developing the handbook, for lack of better words, as to how this is gonna operate. And, and I know that Jack was certainly part of getting that developed. Part of the Alberta environment, part of it, like the words right here, but I can't get it out. How, you know, the, get the guide or whatever you wanna call it, how that project is gonna work.
Yeah, it's just, if, if we need it next spring, it's gotta be pretty quick, okay? Not quick, but like, I don't know, like we don't know what the winter's gonna hold and, you know? I just kinda want, I don't want like a Wild West show out there again. It was pretty, pretty nasty for a while.
Yeah, water conveyance agreement, that's what...
That's what it was, yes.
And, and I know that that was part of getting the project done, was getting that done with Alberta environment. So I, I'm, like I said, I can't speak to how it's gonna operate, cause that's not my area, but I know it's been planned, how it's, how it's gonna work, Brian.
Yeah, I know it was engineered to be operated in a certain manner. So yeah, just a matter of following the guide as to how the engineers envisioned it to work.
Yeah, but are we gonna, like us as farmers, are we gonna have the know and that? Or are we just gonna watch the engineers or Corey open and close as it is? Like, am I gonna, am I gonna say, hey? Am I gonna know how it's gonna run?
I, to my understanding, I think it's operated through the M D, but Arlos, you might wanna...
Yeah, M D, M D staff will operate it, but from a consultation perspective, we'll have them touch base with residents.
Okay, and then I just have one more concern. It's not really concerning, but well, I guess it is. It's, what is the road, nine dash one? Township nine one in between Range Road sixteen one and sixteen zero. There's three culverts in, on the south side of that ditch that water can't, water can't get to those culverts to drain to the lake, to back north to the Horsefly Lake. And in the spring, even this spring, that road was soft. And I don't know, like I know maybe five years ago or ten years ago, they put some extensions on the culverts to try to get the water to run. But if there's hills and, I don't know, maybe send, maybe we could send Corey out and we can look at it and see what we think we can get. I think that should be drained. I know, I understand there's a lake on the north side of the road, but the south side is where the water sits quite a bit in the ditches and stuff. I know, I think John, you know, you know what I'm talking about, so...
Yeah, I do.
So I was just, yeah, just, that's it. See, I never tried to any trouble. I just wanted to thank you all. I just wanted to thank you all, and I really do appreciate that drainage project. That was a, I still think gates on the corridor would've been way cheaper, but whatever, it's, it's done, so. Okay, thanks, guys.
You betcha, thanks, Dwayne.
Okay, I'm going to work.
Thanks, Dwayne. All right. We'll now move to Corporal Wisebroad for his report, R C M P report.
Good morning, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'll start with the stats for the month of August. The R C M P detachment here had two hundred and seven files. A hundred and sixty-one of those were in Tabor, in the M D, sorry. We had forty-five nine-one-one hangups last month, which is quite a bit. Criminal record checks, we had thirty-eight of those. We did one general fingerprint with public. We had thirteen patrols in Enchant, thirty-one at Grassy Lake, sixteen in Hayes for a total of sixty. Parks and campgrounds, we did five patrols at Enchant, one at the Forks, four at Grassy Lake, four at the M D Tabor campground, two in Hayes, and three at Chin Park. Their total of patrols, seventy-nine. The members here wrote forty-eight tickets last month in the M D of Tabor for a total of fifty-six tickets total. And for whatever reason, we never got the stats from Red Cliff or Leftbridge Traffic Units last month, but I do know they were out in the areas. If you wanna move down to page four, it'll show you that nice little crime gauge. And for the first time in a couple of months, you should have page four there. Well, you guys are a lot different there, so just keep scrolling, there you go. For the first time since I've been reporting with this new area, we've got an arrow with red. So fifty-four percent increase in criminal, other criminal code from January to August compared to the same time last year. Overall criminal code offenses are still down thirty-seven percent. And what I've been mentioning to the other councils, this fifty-four percent increase is not a bad thing. So we haven't had an increase in crimes against people or property crimes. What it is, is an increase of members finding people breaching conditions issued by the courts. It's not a, an arrow that causes me any concern. Again, just going with this gauge, persons crimes are down fifty-one percent, property crimes down forty-seven percent. We've had nine fewer break and enters, eleven fewer stolen more vehicles, and fourteen fewer thefts. And that's about it as far as stats go. I mean, there's all those other pages if you guys have any questions. But I'll stop now and ask if you have any questions before I continue on to the couple of things I might like to say.
I'm not seeing anybody with a hand up here for questions, so carry on.
Okay, I just have two things, or three things to bring up, sorry. One is we'll be doing a town hall, an R C M P detachment town hall meeting. It was supposed to be in person in Boxall on October nineteenth at three P M. But it has changed now due to COVID again to a virtual town hall. So I've reached out to your C A O to see if I could borrow your social media expert. And I've gotten permission to work with Carly there, so I'll be talking to her and trying to arrange some sort of a live Facebook event to speak about the R C M P detachment, to speak to the, the community members, gauge their take on what the R C M P is doing, if they have any areas of concern that we could work on, on that sort of thing. So that is October nineteenth at three P M is the tentative date. I gotta work with Carly first here. So that's what I would like to do. Also, just so you guys know, one of our P S Es had transferred, so we were down from two to one. That happened last month, and I'm in the progress or process, I should say, of hiring a new one. And I believe as of this morning, we've had fourteen applicants that passed the first stage. I believe there was about thirty applicants totals. And then lastly, we have one member who's been here for about four years transferring. So I wouldn't be surprised if she is gone by the next council meeting, she's going off to Aridri. She was a good member here, and she'll be missed, but we were S T E, so that still leaves us at full, full establishment. Those are my submissions for this morning.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Corporal Wisebroad before we...
I have one, Merrill. Corporal Wisebroad, it's Tamara. The three o'clock time for the town hall may be challenging for some. If it's done live, then probably it'll be recorded and others could watch. But as you promote it, can people submit via email or directly calling for the same questions you may ask at the town hall?
Well, yeah, so I, I haven't worked on all the kinks yet. I'd like to talk to Carly first, but three P M was decided because it's not just me putting this on. District wants to be down here too, because they can provide input and answer questions that are beyond the detachment level. And that is a time that they can come, because they've got other, they're trying to go to all, all these. So every detachment is putting on one of these, and they're trying to go to all of them. So three o'clock was not, was a time to work for them. But I would definitely look into how people can ask questions if they can't be there, or I can respond to questions after the fact. I'll definitely try to make every accommodation I can to people that can't make it during the live portion.
That sounds excellent, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Corporal Wisebroad? Not seeing any. Thank you very much for your report. Keep up the good work, and hopefully those numbers continue to drop. Don't wanna see any more red arrows.
Well, that's a good red though. That one doesn't make me nervous.
That was, that's correct.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think we need a motion to accept for information the R C M P report. Okay, Brian gives a motion to accept the R C M P report. All in favor? Favor.
In favor.
Carried. Okay, is there anybody else online that would like to address council today? Hearing done, we'll go back to confirmation of minutes, minutes of the August tenth council meeting. Any corrections or amendments?
I can move the minutes from August tenth as presented.
Okay, Jennifer gives a motion for minutes of August tenth. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor, in favor.
Carried. August tenth, public hearing meeting minutes. Any corrections or amendments?
I can move the August tenth public hearing minutes.
All in favor?
Favor.
Favor carried. August twenty-fourth, special council meeting. Any corrections or amendments to those minutes? They're pretty short.
I can move them.
Okay, Brian gives a motion to accept those minutes. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor, carried. All right. We'll go down to seven. Declarations of conflict. Anybody have any conflict with what's in the agenda today?
I do have a conflict with the S M R I D, T I D vote. Merrill Ice chaired the irrigation council, and that's the appeal body.
Okay, so Brian will excuse himself for that one. Any other conflicts? Hearing done, we'll move on to item eight, report, C A O report, Arlos.
Thank you, Reeve Harris. So the C A O report includes the, essentially the operational report from the other, all, all departments within the M D. And we're here to, I guess, address any questions as, as council would like to pose.
Okay. I just have, I just found a couple that I thought maybe I should have a little explanation on. First, it was, have we ever figured out the Boxall Water Treatment Plant problem? Like, I know, I know what happened, but have they figured out why?
Gin, I think Ginger's online, she can speak to that.
Good morning, council. How's everyone today?
Good, how are you doing, Ginger?
Good, thanks. Yeah, so they really haven't figured out, they figured it was something with the water that has caused it. It was reacting with caustic soda. So it was a chemical, chemical imbalance that was throwing the pHs all off. It's a little, the way they gave me in the report, it's really over my head of really trying to understand it. But in a nutshell, it was a chemical reaction with how the pH was in the water. It was nothing operational. So again, that's why this fall, we will be taking, we will be taking some raw water samples from the two locations, two different locations that we pull water from, just to see if there is a difference. And that is what's caused a lot of it.
Okay, thank you. The second one that I just piqued my interest here a little bit, Arlos, was regarding the Horsefly spillway project, and it's at the bottom of page eight, I think. And it talks about possibly rerouting the middle section of phase two, a bit further to the east as a second option bypassing the congested area going through the Atlantic Sugar Property. Can you just expound on that a little bit?
That, that's one of the, I guess, as they're doing preliminary design, that's one of the altern, I don't wanna say alternatives, options that they're looking at in terms of, I guess, trying to stay out of, I guess, as they're enhancing capacity, trying to not interfere so much with some of the existing, I'll call it, traffic that's there, i.e. the sugar factory. I mean, CP rail has to be dealt with either way, but they're trying to look at ways to, from a long-term perspective, I guess, free up the congestion that's there with regard to this drainage project. So that's, that's, that's on the table that they're looking at as they do some of the phase two design. Obviously, they're a lot further ahead on phase one design, because that's what they started with. And it would have been late, early summer, I think, is when we awarded the phases two and three designs. So that's just, just beginning now. However, they do have to kind of piecemeal that particular phase of the project to coincide in line with some of the highway three project.
Right. And shovels in the ground or digging for phase one is most likely next summer?
I, I would say after, like, late fall. That being said, I have to qualify it with some federal regulatory decisions that need to be made with regard to consultations for First Nations as well as environmental considerations. So I, that, that's, that's the goal, but there's always that qualification of, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be bold and specify that there's some, some federal, when it's connected to federal funding, there's some, a little bit longer wait line, wait times. We are making progress nonetheless.
Okay.
On those.
I'll follow up to the Horsefly Lake spillway project. So as managing partner, when we'll be seen, recommend, or R F D for a recommendation to the partners on finding administrative help or something of that nature to look after this project. So to take some weight off of our administration.
So what was the question?
Timeline for, for R F D on that.
The timeline is like to go to the committee, to the storm?
I guess first to come to this body for a recommendation to the committee.
Okay. I, I expect that would be coming before January. There's an Alberta Community Partnership Grant Program that is receiving applications with deadline in early January, and it's something that I wanted to try to incorporate into that project or potential project, yeah.
Did you have something else? And the last one, I mean, I know that it's, it's being worked on, but timeframe or timeline on shovels in the ground on highway three twinning?
Yeah, I think I would defer to Stu. He's been in close contact with some of our, the Alberta Transportation folks to, to speak to that. If he's, if he's online. I know he is, I can, oh, there he is.
There I am.
So yeah, so, so far right now, the plans from Alberta Transportation that I'm aware of, which could change at any moment, we're looking at shovels in the ground on highway three in twenty twenty-three. Next year, it still sounded like engineering and just finalizing all logistics and everything. So the, from what I understand at this point, twenty twenty-three is when they're starting, planning to start to move dirt.
Okay, thank you. Anything else in the C A O report? Anybody has any questions on?
I guess just a quick one on the unpaid linear taxes. Bit of a breakdown there, but maybe just a quick blurb from Brian as to where he's at or what he thinks he's going to be able to collect.
I can let Brian speak to that, giving him time to just chime in here. We will have a much better idea in about a month and a half in terms of what, what's likely, what, what our reality, our twenty twenty-one reality is anyway. We did budget, I think, one point five million for uncollectibles this year, which is, which is what we're hoping we're at the top, top of the curve and that we can start.
Further to that, I wonder if it shouldn't be, I know that some of the assets of one of these companies that the A E R has, I guess, ceased operations of, are now looking at being transferred to other companies. Now, is there, would it be, would it be a good idea to write letters to the A E R asking them to ensure that if there's any back taxes or current taxes for this year, that they be paid before transfers could take place? Is that a possibility, or is that going outside of a wheelhouse?
I mean, we can definitely, we can definitely make that known. We've been pretty active with the A E R, honestly. Every couple of months, I know our lands, our lands department has been reaching out to them very regularly in terms of that process, and we have had some pass with regard to some, a similar company or former company and making sure that A E R pays attention to what's happening. So I don't think there's any harm. I mean, even if, even if it's simple email to their, to our contacts within the A E R, I think that would be helpful.
I guess just making them aware that the companies that are, they're considering taking assets over bankrupt or ceased operation companies that, that, just make them aware that there's some taxes that are owing on these properties?
Yeah. Brian Bedura?
Yeah, and I can speak to that part a little bit. So we, we only have so much information so far with how those properties are proceeding through bankruptcy. And there are a couple of companies or, or two or three that are picking up some of the assets, not all of them. And to my understanding is the taxes that are currently owed and the arrears on those properties is going through the bankruptcy process. And on, on a portion of it, we have been listed as secured creditors, but whether or not there's any funds to pay those taxes is yet to be seen. And the other part is, my understanding with the properties that are being transferred to these, and a few other companies, the, the A E R really doesn't have any authority or ability to, to make anyone pay their taxes. And at this point, my understanding, even the courts are indicating that the purchasers of these properties are only responsible for the property taxes from the date they take ownership of them. And it seems odd to me, but in this particular case, the courts are even dictating to the A E R that the trans, the licenses will be transferred to these new companies. I guess that's within A E R's area of responsibility if they're just gonna comply and do it, whether regardless of whether these new companies have the proper risk ratings and such in that matter. As far as where we're at as tax collections, our, our penalty date is November fifteenth. We've collected some of the taxes, but really no significant amounts as far as oil companies go. And what I can report is the companies that are in, that have tax payment agreements, they are, they are, they are abiding and making their tax payments within, with, in accordance with those agreements.
And I think A E R has on file letters from us indicating our objection to dumping poor wells into a shell company and getting rid of the shell company. We've also got on file that we, we believe that they should be, as John mentioned, making these companies pay their back taxes. But I know that you just explained, but, but they do have on file our stance on that issue. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, they've, they've got many letters and emails and information. I think Brian Pierce is in constant contact with them with regards to lease payments as well as taxes of, of, with regards to some of these transfer activities that are, that are happening over time.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, anybody? Brian, did you have another question or? Stu on Public Works on road shoulder pulling and whatnot, you're still on track to get how many miles done for the year?
We're a little bit behind where I was hoping to be, but we're still on track. I'm still aiming for thirty. We'll see how it goes, but right now we got twenty complete and a couple more open. So I'm still hoping for thirty. Hopefully the fall is good, but we'll see how it goes. But the guys are working hard, things are going well, it's just taking a little longer than I was hoping.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions or comments on Arlos's report? Arlos, you had maybe a significant milestone for Service Tracker. You wanna tell us what happened in the past week and how you feel Service Tracker is going?
Yeah, within about the last week and a half, we did, we did hit that milestone of five hundred service requests received and closed. So there's more actually that have been received, but not completely closed yet. I would say not at, not every submission that was submitted, not all five hundred requests that were closed were, were satisfied, were a hundred percent satisfactory to everybody, but they were at least acknowledged, dealt with, and tried to, tried to work through by the staff. So I guess ultimately the, the kudos goes out to staff for, for responding in that respect. And the kudos, I think, goes out to the residents, councillors as well that are, that are using the tool. It's, when I look at Service Tracker, that's five hundred requests or items that have been dealt with over and above what we, what we deal with normally on a typical, typical day. So I think it's a, I need milestone to recognize at the very least. Thank you for the reminder there.
All right, any further questions on Arlos's report? If none, we'll move on to the batch. Check runs, anybody have any questions on twenty-four oh fifty-seven, twenty-four oh seven-five, or twenty-four oh eight-five? Any questions on any of the checks that have been issued? issued? All right, hearing none, we'll move on then to capital transaction report. Brian.
Uh for the capital transaction report, um the purchases for most apartments have been completed, uh I think there just are some final purchases coming in for the uh fire services as well as uh um ag services or recreation, and the projects in transfer in the uh transportation services are are still ongoing. And um the the one item included there under lot land sales, uh so far this year, we've had just under four hundred thousand dollars of uh lot sales.
Okay. Any questions for Brian on that? If no questions, we'll move on, Brian, operating financial statement.
And uh on the operating financial statement, uh I don't have too much to to say on the first page uh through those departments, they seem to be uh similar to last year and uh doing well and within their budgets. On the second page of the operating financial, um the only item to mention, or items, I guess I got a few listed here, is on Ag Service Board, the um the revenue amount, it looks like we're we're down about a hundred and fifteen thousand in revenue. It's just a timing difference, last year at this this time, we had received our Ag Service Board grant. And I believe the Ag Service Board grant has arrived in September. So like I say, a timing difference, it'll it'll line up next month. Um the other item, the costs in Ag Service Board, they 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 are lower. Uh I believe we we lowered our budgets in Ag Service Board, so they're within budget there with reduced costs. Again, in the land and housing and building, the net amount there looks like we're we're about two hundred and forty-six thousand less than the previous year. And that's a timing difference again, um last year, we had all the land leases uh invoiced out uh at the end of uh August. And this year, I believe the the invoices went out uh in September, so that'll even out. And the last item there in operating, in the operating is the uh under park rec- recreation parks. The um revenues are up uh about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, a significant amount that that is the the camping fees or the or the park rental fees. And we're up about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars year to date uh in those revenues. I'm not sure, I didn't think we had uh affected the price of camping. Um however, whether it's the new uh reservation system or um a a sort of a a warm summer with a very little I guess, uh bad weather on weekends, but uh it seemed like there was a a a lot more activity, a lot more revenue in um that campground.
That's a significant amount. But like I said, it was a pretty spectacular summer as far as weather for camping is concerned. Okay, any other questions for Brian on that report? If not, we'll move to your last one, reconciliation report.
And on the uh bank reconciliation, at the beginning of August, we had uh thirty-nine million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Receipts for the month, one million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four twenty-two, and disbursements of of about the same amount, one million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight ninety-six, leaving us with a balance of thirty-nine million, five sixty-three, eight oh two. And the only other item to to mention on that is, we're looking at setting up a a different savings account, a high interest savings account to um move the majority of the the funds out of the checking account, just so that they're not in the uh the operating account. The amount of interest we earn will be similar, however. I'm just gonna look at uh our rates, uh we get the the rate structure, which is on the 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 C A O's report, uh it um it ranges from point five five percent currently to uh point nine percent. And uh the high interest savings account, I believe on all the funds in there will earn about point eight percent currently, unless interest rates uh increase uh in the future.
I'm sure I ask you this every single month, of the thirty-nine million that's in there, how much is um uh set aside for projects or received from senior government for projects?
So currently, that amount is just over twenty-six million dollars that we received for uh other levels of government for specific projects.
So then technically, we're about thirteen million right now.
Yes, that's that's correct.
So we're good to make it to the the next six weeks to tax collection deadline?
We we definitely are, I know we've got a school requisition due at the end of this month, about one point three million as well as uh our regular operating costs, so but uh we're good.
Okay, sounds good. Brian.
Brian, have we received our provincial grants, our M S I, our gas tax, Ag Service Board grants, or are they in? I don't know.
We've received our Ag Service Board grant, however, um I believe our M S I is still, for the current year, is still yet to be received.
And I'll go ahead.
Gas tax, Brian, do you know if we've received that?
And again, gas tax, I believe this year's uh like twenty twenty-one's allocation is yet to be received, but we received all the previous year allocations.
So is that normal? Is it usually after January? When is, when would you expect it, I guess?
Um, we can expect it anytime, I believe, um. It seems like they're getting later and later with their allocations, and since we have carry forward uh funds, um enough funds from previous years to do our current year projects, they typically um hold off and until I guess the funds are required, and we have enough projects to um enough projects applied for that uh we would require the funds to to complete.
So Brian, what is expected in M S I this year?
I believe just over two million dollars is uh what we're expecting this year.
And the gas tax was tax was being doubled this year, it was about eight hundred, is that eight hundred thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, so our allocation is just under four hundred thousand, so so uh they doubled it, so just under eight hundred thousand is what we expect.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian on any of the financial reports? Okay. We'll move on there. Any questions, anything anybody would like to bring up out of their individual councillor reports? John?
I guess there was one thing I failed to put on my notes in my report, and that is uh the uh the T E A, they they hosted uh double down pro rodeo that was very successful. That was a couple of weekends ago, and it was very well attended and a very well-run show. It was uh uh give kudos to the T E A and uh and uh Legend Rodeo for putting that on, it was awesome.
Tamara, did you have something?
So just uh the importance as we look forward in our agendas and council meetings, the concerns with housing, uh our C A O, uh Tabor Housing was on a conference call and discussing how important it will be to ensure seniors have adequate space, that the ventilation is proper, as we know, COVID isn't going away right now, and our renovation was uh acknowledged as being well-prepared and well situated, so just something to keep in mind as we're looking at assisting or or supporting Taboran District housing. Um and then also their Cherry and Main project, recognizing that there isn't available rentals in Tabor, that it's more and more, and with different jobs, it's something we I really want everyone to keep on the front of mind so that they continue with that. And as far as library and heritage, COVID continues to present challenges for the staff and for Taboran District adult learning, but what is remarkable is how adaptable they all are in finding ways to deliver programs, meet citizens' needs. As far as the handy bus, ensuring every ride is unique so that um they don't have to risk cross-contamination, so as all of us are being plagued by COVID, these organizations are adapting and meeting the needs of people, so I I really commend their staff and their executives for finding a way to keep people safe but still operate. It would be easy to close the doors, but they have found a way to continue.
Okay. Anything else out of any council reports, Brian?
I guess I do have a question for you, Marilyn, the Highway three twinning survey, just a little bit of a blurb, uh that logic to it. Obviously, you're gonna carry on, or?
Oh, yeah, um I I I don't know who all got a invitation to participate in this survey, I thought everybody should have. Uh I know it was open to the public and I I don't know how it was portrayed to the public, like who who would have seen the invitation to participate in the survey? They were happy with what they they got back, I mean, there was certainly some opposition to twinning. Most of the survey was um positive and much-needed uh twinning. Um they had a what's the right word? We just did it two weeks ago, what do you call it? Visioning of sort of exercises to where we go from here. What's that? Strategic planning, and there's everyone's still very positive about moving forward with pushing it from border to medicine uh B C border to Medicine Hat. Uh the focus so far has been our stretch here. Um some of the opposition to it is certainly, you get to the B C border and back down to a two-lane highway, and how does that benefit? Moving product to the coast. But everybody is still very much in support of moving this project forward and continuing to lobby our provincial government to for funding to get it uh from Medicine Hat to the B C border, and I know one of the tough areas is the Crowsnest Pass. There's just absolutely no consensus as to how to get through the Crowsnest Pass and uh the the narrow valley there that where where a twinned highway would go, and it's very um controversial in the Crowsnest Pass as to where to go. But there's certainly other areas, certainly um um Fort McLeod West and um through the through the Bakani Nation is there, at least there got the Bakani Nation engaged now and and working on a study where it can, how it can go through the nation. But it's still a very important project that uh everybody wants to still see it it happen. Any other questions on anybody's report?
I just have one comment, um Eagle Spirit Nest was going to be hosting a vigil on September thirtieth, but they've moved it to September twenty-ninth just in recognition and respect for Truth and Reconciliation Day, so it'll be Wednesday evening, starting at six o'clock in Confederation Park.
That's tomorrow, Wednesday, yep. At six o'clock?
Yeah, and it's it'll actually be a really nice program because we've got elders speaking in regards to uh res- like some residential school survivors and children or survivors and a few key elders in the community that will be speaking, and then the vigil. We are going to be taking donations of new shoes and donating it to the schools and our safe haven where the need is, as well as any funds raised from the candles will go towards Eagle Spirit Nest to do more learning and education in the community. The goal is to have one to two learning opportunities a month.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on down to correspondence. Any need to talk through any of these?
So um the email that is from Ken Holst on T Caps, I I just think it's important that we have a bit of a discussion, did you speak with uh Mr. Holst on that?
I have not.
Okay.
That's why I was kind of um
So.
If you wanna uh enlighten us on exactly what
move it out, so we're not speaking to it?
Oh.
Then, is that all acceptable?
Do that, request for exemption. Can move that if we want. Again, there's lots of letters of support for the R C M P. And then the last one, I was gonna ask a little bit more, what exactly that is. So we just wanna move that one out then?
I would like to move that one for sure, I'm not sure if others have a other areas.
We go just moving that one out then? Out to eight point three. If that's the only one, then we'll need a motion to accept the agenda, the consent agenda as pres- as it's been presented for information.
I can move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Favorit.
Okay, T Caps' response to support loss, I was gonna ask Tamara. So I don't even know about this Alberta Support Office in Tabor, so can you enlighten us what it is?
So just to clarify, so um my employer is T Caps, and so Horizon Victim Services, but that's not the route that I came to this letter, cuz the board just oversees victim services, but I felt it's important to clarify that. Where this comes to my attention is sitting on the T D Cala Board and my involvement in the Food Bank in Saint Vincent de Paul. So this office resided in the provincial building. And this is where people would come if they were making an app emergency funding application to Alberta Works, if they needed assistance with their A I S to uh A I S to independent living, I'm not using that acronym right. They, it was the crisis money that some of us may have known as social services. But we were fortunate to have that office staffed Monday to Friday, so people in need in our community could go there, have a discussion, because when they make an application, there's a form, there's expectations on what they have to provide, whether that's income, housing, um what opportunities they have available to them. And during COVID, that office ceased. It became an online, which many did. But what happened is those individuals still needed support and help. So as a M D board member on Taboran District Adult Learning, which is housed in the same office, that traffic flow moved over to them, so it increased their staffing pressure, whether it was for newcomers or for uh anyone needing emergency housing funding or emergency food funding or travel. And so there was pressure put on them, and as well, other social agencies, including F C S S, were having to help people make their applications or find out why their check wasn't coming. So at a time of crisis, we lost that face-to-face. Many of those individuals don't have access to a phone line, they might have a phone, but it's only incoming calls or texting. When you're phoning the one eight hundred Alberta Works number, you're on hold for a long time. You may run out of minutes, they have a callback, but you might not have enough minutes on your phone. So it puts additional strain on people. And so TCAPS, who is an organization that champions concerns and causes to make our community a better place, and they bring together a large number of organizations that they would bring this forward. And so Ken Holst is the chair of this, and he has brought this forward to the minister and to the councils and to our local MLAs to say, it is very important that this office return to Tabor in some capacity, so that people have face-to-face. And you know, the answer often is, we have offices in Lethbridge or Medicine Hat. But if you're on Alberta Supports, you don't have a car, you're not driving, you don't have access to money to pay for that $100 return cab ride to get your, if you're a single male, $833 a month to live on, because you can't work for whatever reason. So as a council, I feel it is important to support this ask and awareness to the government to say, just because we live 50 kilometers from a main center, it might as well be 500 for some people. And we do have people in need, and we have a great community that supports them, but not having consistent money to pay for housing, it's a disaster. And on that housing note, if you don't have an income coming in, whether that's Alberta Works, or Aish, or EI, you can't even apply for housing. You must have an income. You can't get in, because housing is not free, it's still 30% of what your income is. So their ask is to revisit opening the Alberta Supports office in Tabor. And I would like to make a recommendation and move a motion that the MD Council support the request to reopen the Alberta Supports office in Tabor.
Tam, for clarification, and this is a provincial fund? That is cut your, or where does the funding come from, or where is the funding not coming from now, I guess?
So Alberta Supports is housed, for lack of a better word, under the Minister of Community and Social Services. So it's a provincial organization that pays for these individuals for Alberta Supports. But the negative impact on our municipal community is huge, but it is a provincial department.
So the office that was here, they just closed it. And now for any services, Lethbridge is as close as these people can, that's as close as office they can go to for supports.
Yes, and the answer is that, well, there's a 1-800 number, but that is the in-person. And for some time, the in-persons were all closed due to COVID. Now there's been some accommodations since then, but yes, that is correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Tamara's given us a motion for the MD to write a letter of support for reopening the Tabor office of Alberta Supports. Brian?
I guess my question is, who do we include in that? Obviously, our MLA minister of-
It's the Minister of Community and Social Services.
Anyone else we should be?
Well, I think, and to acknowledge TCAPS' ask, right? So it doesn't show up as an independent letter. You could see they've CC'd it to Grant Hunter and to the town as well. And we have had a number of organizations who've also submitted letters on this behalf. And I think also, it's always important to include MLA Scout. He's been a big advocate for our community, because we all know our community is not measured by borders. So it would be important to include everyone.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, you've got the motion down. Can you just read it back real quick, please?
That MD Council support the request to reopen the Alberta Supports office in the town of Tabor.
That's what you need. Okay, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, we've got a few minutes before 10 o'clock, we'll go on to our next item, upcoming meetings and events memo. Waren't us?
Thank you. Reeve Harris. Nothing too much has changed since the last time this was presented. South Region AAF Conference at Silverstone, Carston on October 6th. And then, as we're all aware, October 18th, Municipal Election Day. Previously speaking, September 30th, that was, we reviewed that in committee of the whole with regard to it being considered a statutory holiday by the MD of Tabor. RMA convention in the month of November, November 23rd through 26th, as well as during that time, I do have, I actually do have a survey to follow up with council on. I'll be doing that individually over the telephone, because it's just a lot more simple in terms of appetite to attend, essentially appetite to attend in-person convention and where preferences lie. So I will be touching base with each of you on that, on behalf, at the request of RMA.
At this point in time, it's a, they're still planning an in-person, or that's what they're trying to gauge is interest in in-person versus virtual?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, I believe that's about it.
So, Brian?
Maybe clarification on the October 6th, South Region AF. I have a text saying it was canceled.
Oh, we can?
I haven't got anything yet. As far as I know, the building or whatever that they're planning to host it in is big enough that they can do it with the rules that are in place now. Let me just see if I've gotten-
Well, Lace sent a text out on the 20th, Council ASP South Region AAAF Conference.
That was probably sent, I think, as an internal internal notification, because you were trying to confirm who was going and who wasn't, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. Jason Bullard, can you speak to it, I guess?
Yes, the, excuse me, the confirmation from the Agfieldman in Carston just sent out an email towards the end of last week saying that they will be under the, I'll see if I can get it right, the REP program, so you will need to provide documentation with you that you have had your immunization, or you have got a test within 72 hours. So they will be checking that and asking for that at the door.
Okay. So if you don't have that, you don't get in, is that what you're telling me, Jason?
Correct.
Okay. And that starts at 8:30 on the 6th of October. And then Arlos sent out a memo last night saying there's a staff barbecue tomorrow that we're invited to attend between 12 and 2, is that what it was?
12 and 2:30-ish to 3, yeah.
Sounds good. Any further upcoming events that anybody's aware of? If not, just need a motion to accept that memo for information.
I can move to accept it for information?
All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
It's carried. Well, it's just about 10 o'clock, so we'll just need a motion to recess, right, Lace? For the public hearing.
I can give you that.
All in favor?
Favor.
Carried. It'll just pause until 10 o'clock and begin the public hearing.
And Lace, you probably sent that to me because I said it wasn't going.
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
That's what I was-